Reduction. And I'm joined by, we're also joined by our Public Works Chairman Bob Blumenfield, Councilmember Busciano, and from Public Works, we have Councilmember Martinez and Rue joining us as well. And Councilwoman Rodriguez. Okay, Councilwoman Martinez will not be with us this afternoon. This is a special meeting, as such, there will not be any general comment. All comments should be directed to a specific item. And just want to remind you that you'll have one minute for your comments. We want to make sure we give everyone an opportunity to speak, but we are going to be pushing up some constraints and we might lose the quorum, so we want to just move expeditiously. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Busciano?
Here.
Councilmember Weesar? Councilmember Blumenfield?
Here.
Councilmember Busciano, once again?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Rue?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Okay. Members without objection, we're going to take up item two first. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment cards on item two?
So far, all public comment cards are with you.
Okay. So we've got a couple of cards here. We've got Puppet. Puppet here. Herman?
Mr. Chair, shall I read the, shall I read the item?
Yes, please, read the item. Item two.
Item two. CD Attorney Report in Ordinance Relative to Deleting Subsection A of Section 80.73 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code and Renaming the Section to Reflect Its Regulation of Catering Trucks.
Okay, we've got Puppet, we've got Herman, Cynthia Barker, and Greg Bonnet. You'll please come up and be prepared. One minute.
Okay. Yes, so this isn't public comment, it's puppet comment, yes. So we're glad to see the important people on the committees here today, that that evil criminal Weesar's not here, yes. So we'll go past these two things forthwith. The municipal code renaming the section "Catering Trucks." Legalize every catering truck in the entire county for LA City, yes. Catering trucks are good. Catering trucks make carbon, yes. Catering trucks offer cheap, affordable food for puppets and people alike. Who doesn't like these? The rich, white scumbags do not like them, so pass this. Drive your trucks into the wealthy west side and put the businesses out. God bless the catering industry.
Thank you. Next up, please.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Greg Bonnet with Public Counsel, speaking today to support the proposal. I just wanted to highlight one thing from our experience representing sidewalk vendors who are getting tickets. We certainly support the council striking subsection A from 80.73, but a lot of vendors are getting tickets under section B to A1, a different section that I believe would remain in the code, to really finish the job on decriminalization. I think it would be best to make it clear that this entire subsection should only be enforced using the Administrative Citation Enforcement Program, similar to what the council already did with section 4200. So, like I said, it's great to strike section A, but a lot of people are getting tickets under section, section B to A1. And to finish the job, that section should be decriminalized as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Anderson Barker. I'm an attorney with the National Lawyers Guild. I'm also here to support item number two, and I'm here to address the issue around amnesty. It would be very beneficial to the community if we could have a ticket amnesty for individuals who've been charged under this section in the past. These are misdemeanors, and so these folks are vulnerable now under the current administration to deportation. And we'd like the city attorney to do some research and give serious consideration to this, and I hope you do this, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, in the state of California, what you call unconstitutional is this presentation of taking away food from the people who work in catering trucks. There's no reason for this. You have to compromise and litigate to remove all these fucked-up restrictions under 42 USC 1983. And for the people who have children who live in their catering trucks to serve you a fucking burrito and a taco for 99 cents, you should be happy. Food comes to you, bitches. Food comes to you. So unless you make new amendments to your regulations, then I won't be so hard to protest and criticize white niggers like you, because it's the minorities who are selling and creating job enterprise. Fuck you!
Okay, that concludes comments on item two. Again, members, this is an ordinance to address a section of the code that was still being utilized to penalize street vendors. That was originally not the original intention. It was meant for catering trucks. So this is some cleanup language. Any questions, members? Any questions on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Then without objection, we will approve the ordinance as presented. Let's move on to item one.
Item number one, CLA report relative to the proposed city sidewalk vending program.
Members, this has been a long road to today. We're attempting to create an ordinance that's equitable and just, not only for vendors, but for brick-and-mortar businesses and for the community. It's important that we remember that our work today and moving forward is not set in stone. We will see what works well, what doesn't work so well, and make adjustments as needed. None of us can see the future, but with the help from the CLA, the city attorney, the advocates, and others, I think we've done a good job to avoid potential pitfalls. And probably have been a part of this process along with my colleagues, Councilmembers Busciano and Blumenfield. And I want to thank the CLA for their time and effort on this report. I know that they addressed many members, that they had to address many concerns that were not originally part of the direction given by Councilmember Busciano and myself. But I would ask that we take comments after, make our comments after we hear from the CLA and the city attorney and our discussion. But before we get started, I want to give my colleagues a chance to say a few words, starting with Chairman Blumenfield.
Thank you very much. Chairman Price, there's been a lot of folks who've been working on this. I'm a relative newcomer to it, have only been chairing this committee for a short period of time. A former chair is with us here, will speak in a moment, who is our, has been shepherding this. I think we've gone a long way. We've got some tweaks I think we can make today to help put us along, get us even further in that process, but it's certainly time that we move forward. So thank you for all your hard work and for everybody who's been part of this process.
We're going to cut off the acceptance of comment cards. If you have, if you still want to make a comment, please get your card up now. Want to make sure we have enough time to hear everyone before we lose our quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your partnership on this item, and I do want to welcome Mr. Blumenfield's leadership as a new chairman of Public Works. I'm happy to partner with Mr. Price on finding a way that's a comprehensive sidewalk vending program. It's alarming to know that we are the largest city without a vending policy. If you look at countries, cities around the world that has vending policies that works for everyone, this is exactly our end goal. And today, the system is a failure. It's an embarrassment, and I've seen it on all sides, as a senior lead officer, even more so as a council member, that clearly arresting our way out of the vending is not the path forward. It's a time where I believe we are creating a policy that's going to work for vendors, that's going to work for businesses, that's going to work for residents. And this policy before us, and I know there'll be some amending items, that our end goal is to find a comprehensive solution to a sidewalk vending policy that works for everyone. And obviously, this has not happened overnight, because this is the first time the city's ever tackled such a comprehensive sidewalk vending program ever. I know we've seen it with, years ago, Jan Perry reminds me that, then Councilmember Hernandez of CD1 attempted a policy years ago, but I'm looking forward, moving forward, and I want to thank all the advocates, the vendors, stakeholders for your patience. I know we've heard you loud and clear. You've come to council chambers, you've spoken. I had an opportunity to meet with Benhamin, who makes a killer elote, which is, it was amazing. I've never had a elote before, Monica, but Benhamin made one for me, and it was really good. I fell in love with elotes. But nonetheless, let's put together a policy that works for everyone in a city that values ethnicity, heritage, and our amazing street food culture. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members, any other comments? Okay, let's have the CLA come to the table. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez. Please.
Thank you. I just, I want to thank all the advocates that are here today for making the time on this very important issue, and also my colleagues. Thank you as the newest member here on the Los Angeles City Council to be part of this really Herculean effort to establish a citywide policy is something that I know took a lot of energy from a number of city staff members. But I think what is most important today is, for me, looking at the opportunities as an economic model for creating a pathway to help enable some of the communities throughout Los Angeles to have a pathway for greater economic opportunity in the city of Los Angeles. And so I appreciate the efforts of the combined effort from an economic development perspective as well as our public work side. So I just wanted to thank everybody for their work on this and their advocacy, and happy to see the progress as the newest member on the city council.
Okay. Mr. Rue?
I just got questions.
All right, great. So we've got CLA at the table. Why don't you give us a little review of the report?
Good afternoon. My name is Felipe Chavez. I'm with the CLA's office. On January 31st, 2017, the city council took several actions with respect to the establishment of a sidewalk vending program. These actions include approval and concept of a proposed sidewalk vending program, request for the city attorney to prepare and present ordinances relative to decriminalization of sidewalk vending misdemeanors, and instructions for city staff to report relative to staffing plan and budget, including cost recovery options. The CLA report before you includes an update on the information requested by the city council, a program designed, which is attachment two of the report, which describes the proposed program and presents potential enforcement models, and a proposed sidewalk vending regulations, which is attachment number three. This includes application, placement, and operating requirements for potential sidewalk vendors. The program design and vending regulations are in response to council requests and are intended to serve as a guide moving forward with the establishment of a sidewalk vending program. In developing these guides, our office worked closely with staff from EWDD, the City Attorney's Office, the City Administrative Officer, the Board of Public Works, the Bureau of Street Services, the Bureau of Engineering, the Office of Finance, the LEPD, and the Los Angeles County Public Health Department. I would like to note that in the preparation of this report, our office considered research contained in three prior CLA reports prepared on the subject and considered public input that was collected as part of the research phase from the business community, community advocates, sidewalk vendors, and from the citywide community meetings that were conducted in 2015. Our recommendations are intended to instruct staff to take the necessary actions to develop the next phase of the proposed sidewalk vending program. I would like to note that while we provide some approximate figures with regards to enforcement, staff needs further direction with respect to where vending may or may not occur to more accurately develop an appropriate enforcement model and report back with cost recovery numbers. Thank you. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. For us, we should have invited EWDD up to the table as well. Our GM is here, Jan Perry. Jan, would you care to join us? Either one, let me ask, do we have any idea of how many vendors there are in Los Angeles? How many street vendors?
Our prior research, with conversations with the Bureau of Street Services, they have indicated that there are approximately 50,000 vendors, 10,000 of which are food vendors.
I've got a question for EWDD. What was the impetus of issuing an RFP instead of utilizing the business source centers, as discussed?
The recommendation that I made to issue an RFP, I believe, would create an opportunity to get a more effective and more experienced and comprehensive approach to setting up vending districts and the administration thereof. Our business source centers are not funded for this sort of function, although the CLA's report recommended funding. They're rather limited in their scope, and to ask them to take on this additional project by themselves was not feasible, in my opinion. What I hope to do with this RFP, should we draft it in a manner that builds consensus, is to attract providers, advocacy groups like Chirla and Caressen, the business source centers, should they choose to participate, business incubation programs out of the community college programs, and hopefully, they'll submit as teams. We'll certainly design the RFP in a way that would encourage them to submit as teams, and I think that that would make for a stronger and better program that would lead to better success.
So you feel that adding staff to the existing business source centers would not be a wise expenditure?
I don't think, the business source centers have a mission, and it's pretty well-defined, and by, you know, putting more money into something with the expectation that that's going to deliver the product that you want is not necessarily, in theory, it's a good idea, and in practice, it may not be a good idea. And I thought that a better idea is, again, to put it out to RFP, and I think we'll get a strong response, a lot of interest, because this will be a citywide issue that I think people will take a lot of interest in, and many of the community colleges are already engaged in micro-business enterprise development, acceleration, and expansion. And so we have a lot of partners out there already through our work source networks, through our business source networks, and I think that the response will be very enthusiastic.
If we have a third-party vendor, is the idea that they would be distributed in a variety of geographic locations, or they'd be housed at the business source centers?
I think we'd have to discuss that, and, you know, obviously, build consensus with the CLA's office, with Street Services, with our department, Public Works, and any other department that is involved in that, to see what makes the most sense. Every area is, you know, very different. Some areas are smaller and more geographically dense, other areas are much more spread out, so we'd have to take a look at the assets that are in an area to determine what makes sense in terms of accessibility for the vendors, so that the vendors can get there and get the help that they need, and that it's easy to reach and easy to find.
Can you or anybody on staff kind of walk us through the process of issuing an ACE citation? What are the requirements from the vendor?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm going to defer that question to the city attorney's office.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
This is about management of the street space and the regulation of the street space on behalf of the vendors. And so to that extent, I need to plant that seed, that we're willing to work as part of a team, but there are still things that we need to flesh out, and if I have the opportunity to say that today, to put it on the record for your consideration, I'd like to have that opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else can answer the question on ACE? Thank you. Come on down.
Good afternoon. Rita Hernandez-Vanegas. I'm the supervising attorney of the ACE program, and I believe the question is, what has to be done to issue an ACE citation?
Correct. And what are the requirements from the vendor? What does the vendor have to show?
Well, I believe that the proposal is twofold. One would be that failure to have a permit, correct? And the second one would be failure to vend within that prescribed location with that, so two instances. So currently, the ACE citation process is if the violation is observed, a violation of the law, then as long as that person has identification, the issuing agency or observing agency can issue an administrative citation. They have ID. That information is sent over to the city attorney's office. We review those, and if all the elements of the violation and identifying information is on that citation, it is processed by a third-party processor. So the requirements would be the same. They have to either fail, the failure to have a permit would be the violation, or having vending in an, I guess, unpermitted area for which they're able to vend. And the onus, I guess, would be on the department, I believe it'd be Bureau of Street Services, to identify that that violation was made by that particular person.
This is for you too, city attorney. If there's an urgent need to address major areas of congestion that need to be addressed, can we do that separately from the ordinance? Or does it have to be included in the ordinance?
I would believe it has to be included.
Okay. And then my last question, can you clarify the part of the framework about enforcement? That's an issue that several are concerned about. Who would have the power, for example, to confiscate equipment, and under what circumstances?
I believe in the proposed ordinance, the only person that would have the power would be the health department, correct? Or Street Services?
In the proposal, the Bureau of Street Services would be authorized to also confiscate, but I believe the police department and the public health department are able to confiscate at this time.
Okay. Members, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it was, I believe, four years ago, I signed on to this motion as I seconded a motion in finding a pathway towards legalizing street vending, because I clearly was very frustrated to work in the streets in the Harbor area, and at the same time, embraced the fact that these individuals want to make a living. They want to contribute not only to the economy, but they want to ensure that they are able to put food on their table and raise their families. But at the same time, I know this body, this city council, time over time again, has really created policies and ordinances without ensuring that there is an enforcement arm attached to it. And I believe the reason, I know the reason why I seconded a motion is to create a pathway towards legalizing street vending, and at the same time, ensuring that there is an enforcement arm attached to a policy, because if we don't have an enforcement arm, we're doing a disservice to those who are following and abiding by the rules. So if you look at what we've done, beginning of the year, we removed the misdemeanor penalty. I believe that was the right thing to do. That was a step in the right direction, and it was, you know, we got the support from the council unanimously. Moving forward, now we're getting literally into the details on ensuring that we have a pathway forward to legalization, and we have policies and procedures in place so that it's not a free-for-all, and that's something that, obviously, a policy that's failed the city in the past. So a couple of questions on, to the city attorney. As far as legal authority, what legal authority does a city have to restrict vending in one commercial zone but not another? Can the council consider competition for brick-and-mortar businesses as a reason for creating a no-vending zone? What are the exact legal terms, restrictions on saying, you know, areas or neighborhoods that want to opt out? Valerie?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Valerie Flores, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Regarding your first question, the city can designate certain areas of the city as no-vending zones, either city-owned property or where there is some public health or safety reason for doing so. For example, crowded traffic areas, areas with sidewalks that are narrow, hilly areas, any other public safety or public health or public welfare-related reasons, but not to protect brick-and-mortar businesses.
Does the city have the legal authority to require the adjacent property owners' consent as a condition of issuing a vending permit?
That's a policy question, not a legal question. The council may design a program which does require consent from property owners, or it could design a program that does not have a consent requirement. It's not a legal issue.
And are there any other permits that the city issues for activities on the public right-of-way in which the consent of an adjacent owner is required? If you can think back.
Yeah, I'm, as I'm sitting here, I can't think of any, because I didn't, I haven't personally drafted any, but I know the city has a valet parking ordinance, and I personally don't know if consent of the businesses involved is required, but I can get back to you on that.
And then on the enforcement piece, you mentioned earlier that they would only be cited for failure to have a permit, or to not being in the permitted space that they applied for, correct? That would be the only two citations that would be given?
There are two tiers in terms of enforcement, two penalty tiers. One is enforcement for individuals that operate without a permit, and then a second one for individuals who operate with a permit but violate some of the conditions and requirements that are included in the rules and regulations.
And then while I have you on the mic, if you, the Bureau of Street Services, the Investigation and Enforcement Division funded, are they funded through the general fund? Yes or no?
Correct.
Yes. Correct? And do the permit fees for news racks achieve full cost recovery for the street services to enforce?
That I'm going to defer to the Bureau of Street Services.
I think full cost recovery in this policy moving forward is critical. So if we look at permit fees for, say, news racks, is the Bureau of Street Services, is there a full cost recovery on the enforcement of placement of news racks?
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Spots, Assistant Director of the Bureau of Street Services. I can research that question for you, but I believe that the policy decision was not to have the fees high enough to be full cost recovery.
So it's important to have fees that would seek full cost recovery on policies moving forward?
I would say it's important to have the right resources in place to conduct an effective program, and those resources could come from fees or from other sources, depending on the policy direction it was given.
Okay. And let's talk about enforcement. The Los Angeles Police Department, are they funded through the general fund or special funds? I know the answer, but I want to hear from you.
From me or from him? I believe they're general funded. I believe they take- I believe they take up...
So if existing enforcement of a citywide vending policy, a citywide vending ban is paid for by the general fund, are we legally able to charge vendors for the cost of enforcement through permit fees? Sharon?
Councilman, that's a discretionary program, so this is a program that you are setting up. It would be similar to something like the systematic code enforcement program that you have, where there is monitoring and enforcement for compliance with the program that you set up. So with regard to the Police Department, to your previous question, the majority of the Police Department cost is a general fund expenditure.
So we can use these permit fees to manage this citywide comprehensive?
Yes, as part of the compliance for the program and ensuring compliance with the requirements, yes.
And that's totally legal to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, my last question, if I can call up Ms. Perry one last time, question about the clarification of good policy, the type of carts that are used, feasibility of using CDBG dollars, program planning activities, but can you just share with me the fact that currently there's no budget to cover staff time? And this is why I wanted to bring, raise the issue that, you know, can we use permit fees to cover the programming costs moving forward? Just get your point of view.
So Jan Perry, General Manager of the Economic and Workforce Development Department. In response to the report, we want to raise the issue of feasibility for the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds Program Year 44. The action plan is currently underway, and we are participating in that discussion now. Proposed applications have already been submitted for evaluation. And then I just raised this issue within the context of street sidewalk vending and whether there is time for that and whether or not we need to consider that for the feasibility under Program Year 45, the next program year. We also want to explore, and we will as part of, I guess, a working group, how all of this ties into enforcement and economic development and develop a low-income target criteria and how we prioritize that. And our function, as you know, is workforce development and economic development and whether or not we can prioritize hiring through our work source centers and our youth source centers. And of course, we'll incorporate all of that into the RFP process, you know, to maximize the assets that we bring to the table. The issue of recycling confiscated carts is something that we don't feel is an economic development activity unless, you know, there's some consensus build around that, that we can generate some economic development activity around it. We have no place for story, just really more of a street use.
Street use.
Street.
Street services use.
Street services, sorry, street services activity. So I just wanted to put that on the table as well as clarification on incentives for the sale of healthy foods. We're willing to work with that, but we would also like to invite in the Food Policy Council to help us develop that, and that will be part of our RFP process too.
Again, in the development and what was in the report on putting out an RFP to have someone manage the program, it would be used as a one-stop shop for vendors throughout the city of L.A. to go to. Whereas you can also use the existing workforce centers, but you said you're not...
Business source.
Business source center.
There's only nine business.
There's nine business source centers?
Seventeen work source centers.
So you would use a business source centers as a one-stop shop for the permitting application, correct?
Depending on how it works out. For example, some of the community colleges have business incubators as part of their curriculum, and they have very active, dynamic programs that can offer even more services than a business source center. But what I would expect is geographically, our business source centers may want to join on teams with the community college, with advocacy group, with a social service provider to create a comprehensive team to be able to help the vendors in that area.
Yeah, and I think a lot of folks, vendors, are not comfortable walking into a government facility not knowing the pathway. So it's important to have advocates, those who they do feel comfortable, existing nonprofits, as you mentioned earlier, Cheryl is one of them, that they can go to with ease and walk them through the process. I just, when my mother immigrated here in 1969, she did not know one word of English, and she had challenges assimilating. And luckily, we had family here to help my mom and dad go through the processes. But this is something I think we should all look forward to moving forward in the policy. I have an amendment, Mr. Chairman, you want to hear the amendment now or? Hold them to the end. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've been joined by Councilwoman Martinez. Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Blumenthal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to ask about the opt-in, opt-out for the business owners. Mr. Blumenthal talked about it a little bit. The council voted with the direction that we should have the consent of the business owners. I tend to think that that becomes a bit of a morass to try to get that, and I think it would be better to have the, require the dissent rather than the consent, because otherwise it'll be very difficult to get that. But is having an opt-out or a letter of dissent from a business owner, is that a, are there any legal issues with that that we should be aware of?
We have not, I'm sorry, we have not explored the issue of letters of dissent at this time. I'm not sure if the city attorney has an opinion on that.
City attorney, talk to that question as much as you can. I know it's always tricky in open session to talk about this, but just whether the idea of moving toward a letter of dissent or an opt-out is legally defensible or if there are any bright line requirements. I know some cities like Portland have, require a letter of consent and an opt-in. I would think that legally, it would be the same to have a letter of dissent, and in many ways, it would be easier for vendors to find spaces if the property owner had a dissent rather than to consent.
I do agree that the legal issue is the same, and there are other cities who have successfully implemented a property owner weigh-in, be it consent or opt-out objection. So I don't see any legal issues with it, but I can look into that further. Not that, off the top of my head, I can't think of a legal prohibition, it's more of a policy issue.
Okay, thank you. But don't leave, because I may have another question that may be relevant to you. So, but just as, I know we're not going to do amendments right now, but I'm, I think, going to want to have an amendment to look into that as we move forward to move us in that direction. Another concept, you know, we, the council direction in January was to create this full cost recovery system. And I'm worried that the cost of a vending license is going to be too expensive for a lot of people, and I want to do everything I can to lower that price. And it occurs to me that there's also, not every vending location should have the same price, because if you're vending at, you know, Hollywood and Vine or somewhere which is a lot, very high-traffic, high-area, it's going to cost, you're going to be able to make a lot more money, but there are also a lot more costs associated with that than if you're somewhere Tampa and Burbank, or you're somewhere where there really is not much of a cost. So my question is, you know, in thinking about this, is there a way to have a differentiated pricing, where you have a higher price in the high-demand areas and a lower price in the low-demand areas? And to do that, to achieve that, I think you need to do two different things, and I want to get your thoughts on this. One is you have to separate the license so that you have a basic license, which is a license to operate, and then a site license, where you get a license to operate in a particular location, because those locations have different values. So, you know, the question is, could we use a system like that where we have differentiated pricing as a way to make it, to make overall the cost lower for most vendors and to have a system that's both legal and fair?
So the legal issue that's implicated by your question is Prop. 26, which categorizes certain fees and permit license charges as a tax if the charge exceeds the government's program to administer the license program or permit program. So certainly, in areas that are, require more burden on the government because they would have to do more inspections because they are high-traffic areas, or there's more of a likelihood that competition would drive unlicensed or unpermitted vendors to sell there, yes, we could take that into consideration, we think legally. And we are continuing to research what other types of pricing issues come into play under Prop. 26. But there's a little bit of room to maneuver if you can, if the government can demonstrate, you know, there's different enforcement costs associated with different locations. And we're looking to see how far those pricing differentials can vary and still comply with Prop. 26.
Great. So I'm, not at the moment, but I'm going to push us in that direction with an amendment that, knowing that that is a legal possibility and it may make it cheaper for a lot of folks and easier for folks to get licenses. Now, in order to do that, we also need to make sure that we have, that we have the technology to do that. And I'm envisioning this system really should be a mobile app or a website where folks can sign up easily and we can very easily see what locations are licensed and what locations are not licensed. And so, and I spent a lot of time talking with ITA and other folks about how this could work, and it's my understanding there's software out there that can make this happen, and so I'm going to try to push us into that direction as well. I just wanted to telegraph that. Other issues I wanted to make sure I brought up before we have public comments so that they're vetted is the penalty issues, looking at the counterfeit goods and how we address those. We have, I'm thinking we probably need a third tier in our penalty system for counterfeit goods, live animals, fireworks, or other products that are illegal, because it's different than the penalty that you might get for either not having a license or for being in the wrong place even though you have a license to operate.
The two tiers that are proposed in the report are proposed to be enforced under the Administrative Citation Enforcement Program, the ACE program. And I think the violations you were talking about are possibly felonies and misdemeanors that are covered under separate laws.
Maybe under separate laws, but I guess I would want to make sure that we have a system where you get a warning the first time, and then the second time, we actually, there is a connection, not just to the legality of not selling, but also since we are now, we are licensing someone to sell products, we have a little bit more of a responsibility, I would think legally, in terms of what they're doing. And so that if we've warned them once formally and somebody has caught them once selling an illegal product, the second time around, we should be able to revoke their license. Is that not envisioned in the system?
It could be designed that way, if that's the council's policy direction. We could, you know, make a violation of the city's municipal code or the state penal code a basis to revoke a permit or deny a renewal. There would have to be a due-process hearing associated with the revocation or denial of a permit, but we could work that into the system if that's council's policy direction.
If we don't, are there any additional liabilities that we carry for having licensed somebody selling products that are counterfeit?
You know, okay.
So under this proposal, you would only be licensing items, merchandise, and that are not already violating other laws, and food. So it wouldn't include pets or stolen goods, or it wouldn't include illegal DVDs or other types of products like that.
And I think the answer is, I think we could defend a lawsuit someone brought claiming that we were responsible for the sale of counterfeit or illegal or dangerous goods, but we would have a defense. And we could, again, make it a condition of the permit that the vendor not sell any illegal items.
Okay. And maybe explain, the lottery system is mentioned here as the permitting, but I really didn't understand how, I think a bidding system works a lot better, but I didn't understand what was being proposed as a lottery system. Could you help explain that a little bit?
There's a recommendation to ask the Economic and Workforce Development Department to develop a lottery system or a process to issue the permits. So you're, because of the different requests that were made by council to give a priority to individuals who are low-income and also kind of give a preference to those who apply first, and possibly those who would endure some sort of hardship if they are not able to continue with an economic activity that they have been engaged in for a long time, we're suggesting that they develop some sort of system that gives some type of priority to that, those populations.
Okay, but, I mean, the lottery concept implies that it's random, it's luck. So you might have somebody in the San Fernando Valley winning a spot in San Pedro or vice-versa, which obviously would be a problem. So, but I understand it's not developed yet, and that's part of what we're doing today is instructing you guys to develop a system. But I like what I'm hearing, which is that you're not wedded to the lottery system but to a process. And I just happen to think that a better process is one that utilizes some sort of a market system. And in doing so, you could still achieve the objective that you mentioned, which is we want to make sure that we give an advantage to folks who are currently vending, folks who are economically disadvantaged. And you could do that in a number of ways. One way is you could actually offer them, if you're having a bidding system, you could offer them a tremendous, you know, $10,000 worth of bidding points or something to that effect. There are a lot of ways that you could do it, but I like the objective that you're going with, and I appreciate hearing that the lottery is not the way I've, the concerned way that I was imagining a lottery to be, but that it's actually, it's sort of a code word for just creating a process. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe that's a better way, maybe we can amend that a little bit to so, to say, rather than say lottery, just to say to create a reasonable process for distributing would certainly make me more comfortable. I have a number of other questions, but I don't want to hog the mic so we can go to our colleagues.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several questions too, but I'm going to try to streamline in the interest of time. First one in regards to cost recovery and fee structure. You know, in order for us to figure out the fee structure and cost recovery, I think your report says there's about 50,000 or 60,000 vendors currently?
Yes.
Does, but since we're, the current draft is saying two per block, does BOE or Street Services or somebody have an estimate on, like, possibly the total number of blocks in the city of L.A., some approximate, or at least the qualified blocks?
Hi, Greg Spots with Street Services. There's approximately, just a little bit less than 70,000 blocks in the city.
These are all blocks?
All blocks. But I don't have off the top of my head the number that are in commercial areas.
Okay. Also, this is residential and commercial?
Yes.
Okay. So roughly, it's more residential, the city's more residential than commercial, right?
Just a little bit more.
So going to the future, I mean, it would be, if you could give us an analysis of the commercial blocks, just some rough estimate, I think that'll help in the future about the fee structure, because if there's only 10,000 qualified blocks, then the maximum vendors that we're looking at is 20,000. That's assuming if every block had two, right? So, and that would really help with the future cost figures. Do we know also the average size of what a block is?
300 to 500 feet long.
What's like a smallest block?
300 to 500 is average, yeah.
Do you know?
I think the shortest street in the city is called Short Street in CD 11, and it's probably about 100 feet long.
Okay. Do we know how many? Okay, 300 to 500, okay, so that's good to know. And I'm asking that because I know we had this discussion in previous committees about larger blocks only having two while smaller blocks still having two as well, and about some of the equity issues there. But that would be good information to have more honed down for future fee structure. Secondarily, you know, when it comes to... Secondarily, you know, when it comes to amnesty, you know, in your report, it's noted that the city's unable to invoke amnesty for vendors who had previously received misdemeanors for vending. You know, there was a reference made in a letter that was circulated by the Street Vendor Campaign and the Public Council that case law seems to, that's, that case law has, a previous case law shows that that's not the case. Has the city attorney considered that? I mean, I, along with-
Right, so I work on the civil side of the office and not the criminal side, but I think there were, my, my recollection was there were two issues. One issue is that the city attorney prosecutors can't take direction from city officials because their client is the people of the state of California, not the city municipal corporation. So the city council couldn't take an action that would influence their prosecutorial discretion, which is a matter of state law. I thought, I think the second issue involved was just that, that under state law prosecutorial discretion must remain with the prosecutors. And so I think those were the main issues, but we certainly are open to reading any case law and point, and so we will consider that case law and we can report back to you on that.
Yeah, so then, Mr. Chairman, if we could add as part of the recommendations, I know you have a whole host of amendments as well, but if, you know, I don't want to accept the fact that we can't do amnesty, especially in light of this new information, and especially if you could look at Estrada as well as Estrada case and the DAPRA case in doing amnesty, because in other areas, they did provide the amnesty. So if you could get a report back on that, Mr. Chairman. And lastly, if I could do another quick amendment, I'd like to preempt a discussion that we're gonna have in the future in the Board of Public Works. So on Attachment 3, under Number 5, Operating Requirements, Item J, I'd like to amend the provision to ensure that we include Universal Studios on the list.
I, I might add there with regard to J, that in order to exclude any street segment, you would have to make findings that showed a, a public health, safety, or welfare justification for excluding those streets.
But can, just to follow up on that point?
Yes.
If, if we had a, if the businesses had the ability to opt out, then Universal Studios and some of those would have that, that option on their own.
Well, actually, J, J has nothing to do with health. J says no vending within 500 feet of such venues, such as?
Well, again, I think the thought behind that was that those venues are particularly problematic because of high-traffic volume, both pedestrian and vehicular, and other sort of physical attributes that make them not conducive to safe vending.
Right.
So-
So, Councilman, we, we hear your concern. We will note that, and as the city attorney has stated, the city council will have to make specific findings as it relates to where vending will not occur as, as, around these large venues. So we will note your request, and we will come back to council with the maps that we discussed in our recommendations for where vending would not be permitted. So we will note that.
To note, it's, they get 30 million visitors a year, 30-plus million, so.
But a point of clarification, if they, if they themselves opt out, they don't have to have the health and safety verification, correct? They can opt out without any, without providing a particular reason as long as they're not violating protected class under, under the Constitution.
Correct. So if you design the system to allow adjacent property owners to opt out, that would give certain venues the ability to, to opt out?
And say, if I can, like, say Staples Center, AEG Live, LA Live, rather, if that is, how is that different than Hollywood Boulevard? I'm just saying hypothetically, right?
Well, again, they both, they're, they're both frequented by a lot of pedestrians, traffic, but each venue would have to be examined on a case-by-case basis.
I think what we're saying here is that with regard to these large venues, the council would actually declare as a result of a public safety or because it's a large venue-
Public health, public safety.
-where there are large amounts of people exiting the building at the same time, that there is a public safety issue, that the council would actually make the findings. It's not proposed that a business itself would be able to opt out.
Thank you. Good. Okay, are you done, Mr. Rue?
That's it.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Councilman Martinez? Any questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have several, several questions. So under Recommendation 1, under your mobile vending allowed in residential areas for up to seven minutes is the time that you're proposing be a time limit. So has the Bureau of Street Services actually looked at that? Is it enforceable and even feasible? Do you know? Have you looked at that? And the reason I'm asking is, for example, if there's a vendor that has more than 10 customers, does that mean that the mobile vendor can stay there on the same spot for more than seven, 70 minutes or more like an hour? Or what would happen in that situation?
So at present, we, our enforcement is complaint-based, and so it takes us time to get out there, and if someone's continuously moving around, they probably wouldn't be there by the time we got there. So this is one of the functional challenges that we'd all have to figure out how to resource correctly, because unless you had sort of a cop on the beat stationed in a residential neighborhood walking the streets, you wouldn't really be able to dispatch and find that violator, because it would take more than seven minutes to get out there.
Yeah, 'cause I, even if the person were to move along, but say there's a long line of customers, what does that vendor do? Does he just cut his losses, his or her losses, and move along and then not serve the 10 customers in line? I just want to figure out what the practicality behind that is. How do we make that work for both the residential area and for the vendor if that person has customers and can potentially make money?
So the, the idea behind that recommendation was to, because council wanted to limit vending to roaming in residential areas, we wanted to ensure that there's a mechanism to get them to, to move. However, if there's a situation where there, there's a line of individuals, each, each, each sale constitutes a transaction. So each sale would be the seven-minute-
So they have to keep moving?
Once they're done.
Even with, even with a line as long as 10 customers?
No, 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 we're saying they would be able to conduct their business and then move along.
Finish and then move on.
Correct.
Okay. On, still on Recommendation 1, under Enforcement and Cost Recovery, I had, I had a question of how are you, how can you distinguish between an individual, say for example, a woman who's selling something versus another person that has maybe 20 carts and 20 locations with 20 different employees? How would you distinguish that when it comes to the, the cost of a permit? Because I would, I would think that the one, the one person working on their own, trying to make a living, how does that compare to somebody who has a full-on operation of maybe 20 carts in 20 locations with 20 employees? I almost don't feel that it's fair for that one person to-
So at this, at this time-
Is there maybe a tier system on the permitting cost that we can look into?
At, at this time, we're only looking at issuing one, one permit or one certificate of operation per individual, per location.
So the way I'm, I'm kind of thinking, and I'm thinking out loud, is, is there a way to permit, to tie the permit cost to the, maybe perhaps the BTRC level and make sure that perhaps we're charging a little more for that one vendor that has maybe 20 different carts and 20 different locations as opposed to the one señora that's just selling her, or one thing? I just don't think that's fair.
I, I, I understand. The, at, at this point, it's, so it's only proposed that we issue one certificate of operation per person, per location. However, in the joint letter that was produced by council members Buscayino and Price, it indicated that individuals would be able to apply to a maximum of three locations. So they would, nobody would be able to obtain more than three-
And operate 20, in 20 different locations and run for-
Correct.
Essentially 20 different carts.
Correct.
Okay. I, I just don't think it's fair for that one vendor to have to pay the same amount in a permitting cost as opposed to someone who's running 20 different carts.
Correct.
My other question, still under the program implementation schedule, do we anticipate the hiring process to allow us to have all the necessary inspectors in place by the time we adopt this?
So council approval, if council approves in the near future the proposed guidelines and recommendations, then it would instruct certain departments or authorize them to begin some of the process. However, the implementation schedule is there to serve as a guide as what would occur once the ordinance is in place and is effective. So if, let's say it's effective July 1st of next year, then at that point, they would have those three additional months.
And after we have that in place, would LAPD be protracted from actually setting or enforcing?
No.
Okay. My next question is regarding the, the push cart. Can you, what does that look like and what can they actually do? And I'm specifically referring to actually cooking food and preparing food on, on the spot, and what's the cooking time that you're allowed to do? Would there be actual flame involved in, in actually cooking the food on the spot? What does that look like?
In some cases, there, there might, there might be. I'm gonna defer to the County Public Health Department if they can respond to that question. They regulate the food aspect, and they have different regulations and restrictions to, to vendors who would be engaged in food vending.
Are they here?
Yes, I believe so.
I don't think they're here.
Ooh.
We don't have, okay, well, that's a big one. And the reason, members, the reason I ask this question is when we do have people setting up gas grills on the sidewalks, where people actually have to get to their place of, their place of destination-
So, my understanding is-
That is worrisome.
They do have different levels of restrictions. So they have high-risk food vending, which requires carts to have different types of components that would prevent any type of, or mitigate any type of problem.
So under the approved push cart, if we move forward with this recommendation, does then, do we stop the, like, starting up the grill on, you know, on a sidewalk? Does that go away? Or does that, is, does the push parts, the push carts replace that?
So for the, for the, for the residential, which is individuals who would be moving, they would not be moving with an open flame. They would be roaming with foods that have already been prepared-
With a push cart.
-such as the elotes and tamales possibly. However, for the commercial areas, the restrictions are a little different, where in some cases they would allow open flame.
Mm-hmm.
Regulated by the county.
We need, if I can get further clarification from the County Health Department, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. My next question was in terms of, I know there's restrictions on the tables and chairs and tents for customers when they're, when they're about to buy food. Does this also, if a vendor is in compliance, does it also mean that they're setting up an eating area for their customers or only to set up to do the condiments and, and prepare the food and then they move along?
The way the proposal is written at this time only allows for the, the food cart itself and possibly a small table for, for condiments.
But not for an eating area for anyone to sit there and eat?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And then my last question regarding the, the enforcement penalties, so I don't know if I'm mistaken or not, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we had shifted to the ACE enforcement only because we didn't have a vendor policy in place. Is that correct? Or am I wrong? This is the way we did that, right? So once we have a policy and a program in place, should we then go back to making sure we're complying with our municipal code violations?
That's a policy call for the council in designing the program.
That's a separation.
But currently vending is illegal, at, at least for non-expressive items, and so the council asked us until we could get a vending permit system up and running.
We would take that, and there, the reason I bring this up is because ACE is basically pointless. If you're not gonna give them an ID, then nothing really happens. And so I just want to make sure, how do we get, how do we then go back to complying to our municipal code violations? But that's a different issue. It's not part of this policy discussion.
It, it is gonna be part of the council consideration and recommendations to tell us in drafting the ordinance, what sort of a, a penalty structure you want, ranging from keeping it in, as an ACE citation, to potentially putting it back in the municipal code as a full potential misdemeanor for violations.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd like to see added is under the, the program design to allow a creation of a special district or non-vending areas, I'd like to add one more, one additional criteria, if I may. Is this the time? Would you like me to do that at the end?
Want to do it, do it at the end.
You want me to do it now?
No, no, can you do it at the end? We'll take all of it at the end.
Oh, you want me to do it at the end? Okay.
Ms. Martinez, the, the county representatives are here. Do you want to ask your questions regarding?
Yeah, I was just, wanted you to describe a little bit what our, the push cart example would look like. In other words, specifically, how much food would you be cooking or prepping at, on location? And would that include actual, you know, having to turn on an actual grill to actually prepare the food on site?
Right, so my name is Denise Naborio. I am from the County Health Department.
Mic up.
I can't hear you. Sorry. Is it, is it me?
Closer to you.
Sorry. My name is Denise Naborio. I'm from the County Health Department, and regarding your question on the push carts, the cooking carts, we do allow cooking on the cart. It is per order, so if someone ordered, I suppose, a burger, yeah, that, that it would be grilled to order. And yes, we allow a propane tank to be used to, to heat cooking equipment.
So that's part of the same, that's part of the same push cart that you're describing in the recommendation? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I just have one more quick question. Regarding Attachment 2, page 2, where it's about the examples of opt-out areas, narrow sidewalks, sloping sidewalks, all of that, is there any other way anyone could opt out?
That, that would be up to, this criteria is suggested criteria that you would be able to use to determine whether you wanted a certain area to opt out.
Right.
If you wanted to add additional criteria, I believe you can do that.
Well, I, I thought, so, go ahead.
Right, so if you're not gonna include an opt-out for property owners, you could still exempt certain areas based on the kind of criteria that's listed on Page 2. You know, that, that the location is not suitable for vending for health, safety, and welfare reasons, and these are some examples of reasons. But they're two separate issues. It depends on how you design the system.
And just, we were just talking about, I think, so one of the recommendations that I indicated we're gonna make was to, following up on what the council put forward when it moved it forward, was the council wanted to have a, a consent. And then I, I was suggesting and that we, rather than have a consent letter, that we have a dissent letter, basically an opt-out provision, because I think that would be better, create more opportunities for the vendor. If we had an opt-out provision, then I would rephrase Mr. Rue's question, saying, in the conditional sense, because I think we're gonna go that direction. If we had an opt-out provision, what would be the criteria that the business owner would have to obey in order to opt out? Or would there be any? Is that, Ms. Rue, is that your question?
Again, so if you design a system where you give the property owner, which again owns the fee under the sidewalk, the ability to opt out, as long as they opt out for non-discriminatory or illegal reasons, they, they really don't need any other reason. They could just decide they didn't want vending at their location.
Do you concur? CLA? C L?
Well, that is the legal response.
So if we, if we create an opt-out?
Right, so a business owner could say, a restaurant owner could say, "I don't want any other food cart in front of my restaurant," and that could be the reason for opt-out.
Correct, just like if you originally, like, as you originally asked us for a consent letter-
Right.
-a business owner could decline to give a consent letter because they didn't want a, a vent, a mobile vendor in front of their establishment.
But it is a prerogative of the city council to decide that that is the method or the process that you want.
That's a policy, that's a policy.
Right, it's a policy question.
And theoretically, we could also, they could also, correct me if I'm wrong, in, as part of their dissent letter, they could say, "I don't want to have food, but I'm okay having merchandise," or "I'm okay having ice cream, but not coffee." They could do whatever they want. They could do whatever they want in their, set whatever conditions they want in their opt-out letter, since it's their, their underlying property.
Correct, but it, it might be better, more administratively easier to handle if there is simply an opt-out or not. Because if you start allowing property owners to put too many conditions on their, what they're willing to do, then it's a lot of management trying to figure out in any location what can and can't be vended.
Right, or we could just have categories, you know, food or not food, or something hot, cold, to make it easier. But, but that becomes a policy question.
Correct.
And the recommendation is basically to have you guys develop it, so we're not getting into that level of detail.
Right. I would, yeah, I would really be interested in seeing that, how that would work out, because I'm also concerned about the liability issue, then, then, does, so, all liability goes to the business owner then? Because they're actually taking responsibility to the frontage.
Again, no, the primary liability for the vending would be on the vendor.
Okay. Well, but I look forward to seeing how that would look.
Yeah, that'll be coming back to us.
I think it's a more in-depth conversation.
That'll come back to us.
One last question, if I can, Mr. Chairman. So, colleagues, this is no different than what we're doing today with the cannabis industry. We're regulating a new industry where we are finding, and I feel there are many parallels to, you know, licensing cannabis to licensing vending in the city of LA. And if you look at the technology pieces Mr. Blumenfeld indicated earlier, I feel that this is, the technology will be speaking all the same language. So, the fact that, you know, you can get online, look at different applications, documentation, mobile inspections enforcement, so, all this stuff, you know, building permits, solar permits. And I feel that we can get all this technology through the iCloud or any cloud, and get the mobile workforce doing the enforcement through mobile devices. And this is gonna be, again, no different than the technology that's already gonna be in place. So, if you look at instruction number five, instruct EWDD before us, it says, "Instruct EWDD and BSS to report relative to the use of technology to improve access to the permit process, education, training, and enforcement." I would, I would direct you to look at what the cannabis department is doing today and mirror that same technology so that, you know, we can have a seamless process for the vendors, but at the same time, have a technology in place for staff and officer, enforcement officers to have it, feasible technology to use moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is the start, I know you, we keep saying that, it's in progress, in progress. We know we're going to be making changes. Members, those of you that have amendments, if you could get them to the desk, so we can just make sure we're coordinated. Are there any other questions?
One more short, sort of technical one, which is, it's about enforcement. One of the components is having inspectors. We requested a report back regarding staffing to include recommendations for changes necessary to MOUs for enforcement employees to work nights and weekends. What's the status of that effort? And obviously, this goes beyond just vending, but also sidewalk dining, other things. But are we, have we figured that out yet in terms of getting off, getting enforcement on off-hours?
We, we did include preliminary numbers, which are included as part of the models, but we really need, staff really needs to know where vending is going to ultimately occur, so that they can provide a staffing plan that includes the different shifts that you're requesting.
But just, just to get the MOU to open up the possibilities of nights and weekends, it can't happen until you have the staffing plan? Is that what you're saying?
We could start doing a rough-
No, you don't need the MOU to begin that.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand your answer.
I said, if I understood correctly, do we need the MOU prior to developing a staffing plan? And I don't think we need the MOU to propose a staffing plan that's based on where vending is gonna end up happening throughout the city.
But in order to have enforcement on nights and weekends, we need that MOU, correct?
To actually begin enforcement, yes. And we can also work with the departments to figure out the costs of the nights and weekends. But we won't actually need anyone to work night and weekends until the program's up and running.
Okay. I know that we, we already in the past requested a report back on that, on that issue, and I just guess, I guess I'll just reemphasize that, we need to figure, we need to figure that out, so that we're not, we're not in the place when this all does develop, that we're, we're then trying to figure out how to get the MOU for nights and weekends.
Correct.
Okay. Ready? All right, let's move on to public comment. We're going to take as many as we can before our quorum disappears. So, when I call your name, if you could just come up quickly to the microphone, please, and you've got one minute. Ed Bell, Grinelda Medrina, Mike Harkins, Robert Beard, Nicole Shanarian, Francisca DeRosa, Liron Gruber, Marina Alvia, Joseph Marini, and Reverend Garcia.
Good afternoon, my name is Ed Bell, and I represent Madame Tussauds Hollywood. We're here today to ask that the city expedite the passage of this ordinance in order to bring a sense of calm to counteract the chaos that we see currently existing in Hollywood. Ever since the city started working on this ordinance, the situation has actually got worse. We support exempting the Walk of Fame from the ordinance and creating a 500-foot buffer as well, so that our corners are not heavily impacted. Most of the sidewalks and the side streets are more narrow than the Walk of Fame, and it would create a choke point for pedestrians if there wasn't a 500-foot buffer. I've brought along a handful of photos of conditions from this summer, and also in recent weeks. And as you can see, vendors are lined up side by side, some selling food from shopping carts, and some laying merchandise out on the Walk of Fame. This doesn't even show the full scenario. We see snake charmers, seedy vendors, costume characters, and the like outside every day. We have attractions in major cities throughout the world, London, Las Vegas, Berlin, Amsterdam, New York, to name a few, but nowhere is the street seen as hazardous and chaotic as outside our doors.
Thank you. Next up, please. Identify yourself.
Mike Harkins, I'm the Assistant General Manager of Hollywood and Island and the Dolby Theater. I'm not here to formally support or oppose the draft as-is, but rather speak just real briefly regarding public safety on this issue. I think it's imperative that regardless of what happens at the end of the day here, some type of enforcement is implemented. We cannot have the continuing chaos and anarchy that continues out there, and we need it to be safe for all that this affects, including vendors alike, tourists, and employees. Specific to Hollywood Boulevard, I would like to mention that there are certain public safety issues that some of you may or may not be aware of regarding the lack of space, the amount of tourists that travel the block of Hollywood along the Walk of Fame, which also happens to be a historical, cultural monument. Keeping that clear leaves the city six feet of actual city sidewalk space from the curb. Those curbs are white painted for loading and loadouts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nicole Shanarian with the East Hollywood Business Improvement District. I'm heartened to see the CLA recommendations for a report back with options to facilitate the collection of fees by business improvement districts from permitted sidewalk vendors. This will be crucial for bids such as East Hollywood, where property owners have elected to pay additional tax assessments in order to maintain the sidewalks and keep the bid clean and free of trash. I encourage you to release this report as soon as possible in order to facilitate adequate input from the business improvement districts. Of paramount concern to the business community is enforcement of this ordinance. The East Hollywood bid primarily extends along Vermont Avenue in a highly pedestrian-oriented area between two metro stations, LA City College and the Braille Institute. It is very important consequently that our sidewalk space remains unencumbered and clear for pedestrian safety. It's very important to us that we have as much enforcement in this area as possible.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Liron Gruber, representing the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I'd like to thank the committee and your staff for continuing to identify in the report that Hollywood Boulevard and the Walk of Fame are unique areas in the city that must be treated sensitively. The one area where we do remain having concerns is regarding the enforcement component of the proposal. Just yesterday, I received an email from a distressed tourist saying that she was shocked to see two street vendors setting up their tables on top of six of the stars at Hollywood and Highland, and LAPD told them there was nothing they could do to prevent it. The current enforcement model simply does not work. The ACE citations are the same as no enforcement at all. We are concerned that the staff report recommends that it be kept in place for another 18 months. Please put in adequate enforcement. I would like to share copies of the email with the members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Joseph Mariani, I'm the Executive Director for the Central Hollywood Coalition, and I want to thank you for your time, and thank the committee again for trying to create a framework that protects the interests of the vendors and the brick-and-mortar businesses that contribute to the vitality of our city. As the Executive Director of an organization that represents over 250 businesses, I'm asking that the ordinance that is eventually approved contain clear and concise guidelines related to enforcement, and that the proper agency would be tasked with implementing it. This could be one of the best or worst things for our city and its built environment, depending on this key issue, enforcement. This will also be to the benefit of the vendors, who have sacrificed much to be here today, and who want to play by the rules, I believe. This will also give our businesses and entrepreneurs confidence in a fair and equal environment to compete and continue to foster the economic vitality of our city. Thank you again.
Thank you. Let me just tee up the next speakers, please. Amanda Zeidner, Doug Smith, Alfonso Grivetta, Cynthia Barker, Greg Bonnet, and Marie Ramsay.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Robert Baird, representing Provincial Institute.
I'm sorry, sir, what's your name again?
Robert Baird with Provincial Institute.
Thank you.
This is a national nonprofit that serves as a focal point for primary prevention, to prevent injury and illness before they occur. Our work emphasizes the community factors that influence health outcomes and equity, including income stability, legal standing, community safety, and healthy food access. Street vending has long been a fallback enterprise for those struggling to make a living within the formal economy, a health-promoting behavior that has always warranted protection rather than criminalization. We support a strong, effective, and equitable street vendor policy that fully decriminalizes sidewalk and park vending. We also encourage the city council to implement a regulatory structure that protects the vital income-generating activities of street vendors on a citywide basis, without giving veto power or inappropriate influence to other businesses, or drafting exclusionary districts that take whole sections of the city out of play. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Francesca Delarosa with Works. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer. Street vendors are a vital and affordable food resource to the tenants we serve, especially at the end of the month when one's monthly food allowance has already been spent. Where not for the street food vendors near our housing communities in Highland Park, Echo Park, and Hollywood, many of our tenants who are homebound due to illness or lack transportation would not have a way to purchase a hot meal or produce to get them by. Local vendors are our neighbors and friends and help fill the gap for those in need. When any community member is unjustly targeted for simply trying to support themselves, there is a painful ripple effect felt by so many in our communities. These hard-working mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, our vendor family, are not criminals. They are survivors who have been waiting for more than four years for you to take action. Sections 8073 and 6344 still allow for vendors to face criminal charges, and the years of unjust criminalization, and immediately adopt decriminalization ordinances today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Zeidner, and I'm a faith-rooted organizer at Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice. I'm here on behalf of a committee of women clergy and other women community leaders and allies called CLU Power. Together, we have pledged solidarity with LA street vendors, because we know this is an issue of economic justice for workers who've been pushed out of the formal economy. And we also see the legalizing of street vending as a women's issue, because the vast majority of LA street vendors are women, entirely women of color, and many immigrant women as well. On every level, we are still fighting for gender equity in our economy. We still see a pay gap for women, and women still face discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Many LA street vendors are entrepreneurial women who created a job for themselves, and yet they work in the shadows. Despite criminal, decriminalization efforts, women are still facing confiscation of merchandise and fines and penalties. This is true for vendors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Smith, I'm an attorney at Public Counsel. First, I want to thank you for your very careful consideration of all the important elements of this policy. We strongly support a comprehensive sidewalk vending program, but we're concerned about a proposal that would require vendors to obtain permission from brick-and-mortar businesses, whether consent or dissent. This is an unfair burden to the vendor applicant and could result in increased instances of extortion. No other regulation gives one type of business complete veto power over another type of business, especially where we're talking about private property owners regulating the public land. Pitting vendors against brick-and-mortar businesses is unhelpful. My organization works with and provides legal support to low-income entrepreneurs starting and operating small brick-and-mortar businesses across the city. So, we know the challenges exist, but we also know that preventing others from starting or operating a small business is not the answer. Instead of a policy that favors one type of economic activity over another, we need policies that uplift and support all types of small businesses. Hope you'll take this opportunity to advance a fair policy for LA's low-income vendors and workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Marie Ramsay, and I'm here on behalf of the Central City Association, which works to enhance the vibrancy of downtown Los Angeles. The CLA report before you today does a good job detailing the sidewalk vending program. It closely aligns with the framework put forth by council members Busciano and Price. CCA is supportive of that framework and of advancing a vending program in Los Angeles. We'd like to offer a few recommendations for the committee to consider. First, we'd like to see property, our business owner consent included. We believe this is consistent with what other cities with successful vending programs have done. Second, we would like enforcement for those operating without a permit to be distinct from those operating with a permit. We believe this is critical to support those who are participating in the program. Third, we believe the vending district approval process should be streamlined and easy to understand. Fourth, we believe the placement requirement should include tourist destinations like museums and amusement parks. And finally, we believe there should be language that prohibits counterfeit goods. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name's Cynthia Anderson Barker, an attorney with the Lawyers Guild. We recently filed litigation against the city of LA for confiscating the property of street vendors, particularly, we were looking at street vendors in the Fashion District, and we're in the process of settling that case. So, the Bureau of Street Services should not be in the business of confiscating vendor property. You're gonna run into a lot of legal problems. Secondly, on the opt-out and opt-in issue, I spent some time with a writer from La Opinión. We were in the Fashion District bid, and we were interviewing vendors on the sidewalk in front of businesses, and he wrote a story, because the story was about vendors being charged $400 to $600 by businesses for allowing them to sell in front of their property. If you open the door on this issue, you're gonna have a lot of problems with extortion and graft. And finally, Marie Martinez's recommendation to make ACE tickets misdemeanors is completely outrageous. Thank you.
Please, please, it's, respect the speakers.
Good afternoon, council members. Greg Bonet, attorney at Public Counsel. I have here a small amendment I'd like to recommend that would make a big difference for some vendors. This is, this is fairly technical, but I don't think it's controversial. On attachment three, page six, the proposed operating requirements seem to require that basically anybody selling food would have to do so from a Department of Public Health-approved cart. In most, in most cases, that makes perfect sense, but there's actually some limited circumstances where the retail food code and the county health department doesn't require a vendor to sell from a cart. The county code has something called a, it's a personal Hawker license, is actually the cheapest public health permit you can get, and it allows vendors to sell basic, non-hazardous packaged, packaged goods just from their person. This could be a very accessible way for vendors to come into compliance with the county food code and sell legally, and we're worried that the way that the operating requirements are currently drafted may unintentionally preclude that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Michael Nazzard, Suzanne Holly, Caridad Vasquez, Merced Sanchez, Jesus Elias, Isela Garcia, Kanya Herrera, and Ofelia Ruiz.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Holly, and I represent the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. There are three key elements in two omissions which, if addressed, would greatly assist in facilitating the success of this program. The first is that property owner input, either consent or the option to opt-out, be required. The CLA's very thorough report shows that there is precedence for this in San Francisco and Portland, and both cities have models for how this could be effectively achieved. Secondly, particularly in downtown, the landscape of the sidewalks is rapidly changing, and it would be very beneficial to have more flexibility in how special vending district changes were made after the initial implementation. Third, with regards to compliance, in order to fully support those who are participating in the program, it's critical that enhanced enforcement is not delayed until a year after the program begins. And that it begin with Enforcement Model 3 and that a stricter two-tiered violation policy be put in place. As far as the two omissions, placement should be expanded to address tourist destinations like museums and metro stations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Caridad Vasquez, y soy vendedor ambulante y vivo en Boyle Heights.
My name is Caridad Vasquez. I'm a sidewalk vendor, and I live in Boyle Heights.
Antes nada gracias concejales por escucharnos a todos los compañeros que estamos aquí.
Thank you, council members, for listening to all the partners that are here.
Tenemos nueve años en esta campaña.
We have nine years in this campaign.
Y ya de cuatro años que pasó y no hemos visto nada que se nos pueda ya para poder trabajar legalmente.
Four years have passed now. We don't see anything legally being done that allows us to work in a legal manner.
Somos personas que estamos al día vendiendo nuestros productos para poder seguir adelante.
We are people that are making it day by day, selling our products so that we can get ahead.
Y no queremos vendedores, dos vendedores por cuadra. Queremos que todos los vendedores podamos trabajar juntos.
We don't want to see two sellers per block. We want to see all of us being able to sell together.
Los Ángeles es una ciudad global, y en Los Ángeles sabemos, hay vendedores de cultura, de comida. Gracias.
Los Ángeles is an international community, and we see the culture being represented in the streets. Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Merced Sanchez, y soy residente de Boyle Heights y vendo el distrito de la piñata. Soy madre y abuela, señores.
My name is Merced Sanchez. I sell piñatas. I'm a mother and a grandmother.
Quiero manifestar la urgencia de un permiso que nos permita realizar nuestras actividades legalmente.
I would like to emphasize how important it is for us to perform our activities in a legal manner.
Queremos distritos especiales porque en el área que yo vendo somos demasiados vendedores que hemos permanecido ahí por muchos años.
We want assigned districts for vending because in the area where I live, there's a lot of us who have been there for many years.
Nosotros somos el alma de la Central Olympic. Si nosotros, los negocios se verán sumamente afectados, así como la ciudad en su economía.
We are the soul of Central Olympic. Without us, the economy will be affected.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you, members of the council. My name is Natalia Garcia.
Tengo 75 años y soy vendedora ambulante del sur centro por 15 años.
I'm 75-year-olds, and I'm a sidewalk vendor on the central side for 15 years now.
Quiero pedirles que en la ley replaje un permiso de personas discapacitadas y de la tercera edad como yo.
I would like to request that the law has consideration of permits for people with disabilities and people that are older, like me.
La venta ambulante a mí me ayuda a poder tener unos dólares extras para solventar mis gastos personales.
Sidewalk vending helps me to be able to have a few extra dollars for my food and for my personal expenses.
Porque por mi edad yo no puedo trabajar, sé que ustedes no son inhumanos.
Due to my age, I'm not able to work a normal job, and I know that you guys are human.
Nosotros los vendedores sufrimos mucho, la persecución.
Time is on it so fast, but we are facing persecution. Do I get any more time to say anything else?
Hello? Did she finish her comment? Did she want to finish?
Dice que puede terminar su comentario. La venta ambulante a mí me ayuda a poder tener unos dólares extras para solventar mis gastos personales.
Sidewalk vending helps me to have a few extra dollars so that I can buy my personal items.
Por mi edad ya no puedo trabajar, sé que ustedes no son inhumanos. Nosotros sufrimos mucho, la persecución.
Due to my age, I'm not able to work a normal job, and I know that you are not inhuman. We suffer persecution.
La persecución por las multas costosas que nos dan, nos dan 25 dólares que ganamos no alcanzan para pagar una multa de mil dólares.
We suffer persecution because the fines that are given to us with the $25 that we earn are not enough to pay a $1,000 fine.
Les pregunto a ustedes, ustedes como ustedes estuviesen, ustedes tuviesen que ganar 25 dólares ser criminalizados.
I would like to ask you, how would you like to, how would you feel if you were criminalized for earning $25?
Por eso estoy aquí, abogando, abogando por que nos puesten los permisos, los permisos para nosotros, los vendedores.
So that's why I'm here, to request not to put obstacles for us to obtain permits as sidewalk vendors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Ofelia Ruiz.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ofelia Ruiz. I'm a sidewalk vendor on Alvarado. I'm here to ask for your support. Because we're being criminalized. We have one for sidewalk vending to no longer be considered a crime. Nevertheless, we're still being criminalized. So that is why we're bringing forward that we're still being harassed and persecuted. Simply for trying to bring some bread home. We're not criminals. If you allow for us to continue to be criminalized, there will be more poverty in our homes. So we are urgently requesting for your support for a just permit.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Isela, good afternoon, I'm Isela Garcia, president with Estelle Community Corporation, and we're a founding member of the Los Angeles Street Vending Campaign. On Monday, we marked the four-year anniversary of the first motion by Councilmember Price, and we said that started this council process. That's 1,460 days that literally thousands of vendors and their supporters have been fighting to keep hope alive that the city of Los Angeles will establish a permit process for their small business. A couple years ago, I was on a very conservative radio talk show. I was prepared to hear, actually, I braced myself for the most discriminatory and racist remarks about people I cared deeply about. And I was surprised that the talk show host said he was originally upset about the street vending issue, and then when he read more about it, he realized that vendors were calling for permitting fees and taxing themselves. He was shocked that any group would be advocating for that. And then basically, overall, he said this was a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, let's tee up Cesar Palma, Idiola, Mana Simmons, Isabel Rodriguez, Guermina Gonzalez, and Adriandra Rodriguez. Adriandra Rodriguez. Sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Cesar Palma. I sell on Seventh Street in Alvarado. And that is my only source of income. Sellers are being persecuted by the police. We get fines. We get humiliated. We are physically, verbally, and emotionally harassed. For selling in parks and Staples Center. We ask for you to take action to decriminalize Codes 8063 and 6344. The impact of not decriminalizing these two codes faces us against an invisible wall, which leads us to being detained and deported. So therefore, we want the permits now. It's been four years now that we've pushed this forward, but we still don't have an answer.
Thank you.
Dear council members, good afternoon. My name is Alejandra Rodriguez. I come to share my concern with excluding sales, sidewalk sales on Hollywood Boulevard. There's several council members that want to exclude sidewalk sales for arbitrary and racist reasons. If council members and businesses exclude sidewalk sales for other reasons other than security and safety. You would be creating invisible walls, and that's why I want you to consider which side of politics you are in. Are you on the side of the races, the political side of races like Trump or on behalf of hard-working women? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Isabel Rodriguez. I'm a single mother, and I work in Echo Park. I'm here to encourage you to decriminalize sidewalk sales. I know very well the feeling of being criminalized. A year ago, I had an encounter with the police. It started off as a ticket. It turned into a violent and abusive situation. The police officer made fun of me and said, "You are one stubborn woman." "Don't you get it? You can't be selling here." He ended up putting me in handcuffs and behind the squad car. My son was with me that day, and we were both detained, and it was an impacting experience. We sell out of need, and if we stop selling, our families will suffer. Please support families, hard-working families. So I'm asking you for decriminalize Codes 64.44 and 80.73. Working is not a crime, and the police should not treat us like criminals. We want to live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Garcia, Garcia, Nakar, Rossley, Pástimo Marbrietz, Evangeline Prados, Natalia Garcia, Nina Leon, Gonzalo Solis, Anna Gill, Alfonso Garcia.
Mi nombre es Graciela Nakar.
My name is Graciela Nakar.
Soy vendedora ambulante del área de Hollywood.
I'm a sidewalk seller in the area of Hollywood. I've been doing this for 20 years, and I live in Boyle Heights. Dear council members, I want to notify you that I, for many years, have been harassed by the police in my place of work. One of, on one specific night, a police officer that is very aggressive and very mean to the sellers, he took away my merchandise. I ran, I felt intimidated, and I fell. And I fractured my leg, which now prohibits me from being able to walk well. Here's the proof that I can't walk. Unless I wear a special boot. As long as we don't have a special permit for sidewalk sales, we're going to continue being criminalized by the police. Please, council members, listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members.
My name is Anna Maria. I'm a sidewalk salesperson. I work very hard to be able to feed my family and to provide for their basic needs. I work very hard to be able to feed my family and to provide for their basic needs. I want to call out that it worries me when you want to put in disadvantage sidewalk By giving business owners the ability to exclude sidewalk sales. That falls under the profile of discrimination and racism. The immigrant community is being attacked by a political and racist system. That's why I'm asking you to allow for all sidewalk salespeople to be able to come out of the shadows. With a just system of permits without exclusivity. And we hope to receive good news from you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Alfonso García. I'm a salesperson at Hanson Dam in the Valley of San Fernando, San Fernando Valley, Pacoima. I'm here to represent my colleagues who are salespeople. And to tell you that it's been four years since the sidewalk sales motion has been introduced. There has been progress, but not enough because other vendors are still facing the consequences of facing charges and fines and being treated as criminals. On behalf of my colleagues, I request that you eliminate the criminalization of codes sixty-three point forty-four and eighty point seventy-three. We are willing to work with you to achieve a law that helps the hardworking communities and the disadvantaged community.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Faustino Martinez. I'm a sidewalk salesperson on Main Street on District Nine. I come here representing my community of sidewalk salespersons. We are concerned that this committee is proposing for two vendors per block. This destroys the microeconomy of sidewalk salespeople. We have been working in my district of being an example for that district. It is a special district established that it works with small businesses and with the Under the law with two sidewalk salespeople. The two sidewalk salespeople per block is an unjust one. There is no inclusion. I ask, what is the criteria for having two vendors per block? This proposal will discriminate vendors like a microdistrict. To discriminate my district would be arbitrary. It would not be beneficial, and it will be a law that will be limited. I advocate for my council member as a champion for my district. To establish a special district to be a model of a program that works for all. And I request from my council member from District Nine. We want to see him oppose the minimum, the maximum of two vendors per block. We want to work in unity. We want to work together with the committee.
Okay, we've got, heading into the stretch, Fanny Ortiz, E.R. Risotto, Landre, Jesse Leon, Karen Morrison, Armado Flores, Corey Darcy, Sarah Walsh, Lori Sale, Marty Skelton, Mike Eckert, Ellen Rioto, Paula Flores, Blair Bestin, Andrew Kreitzer,
Hi, my name is Fanny Ortiz and I'm from Boyle Heights and I work as an-
Sorry, your name, please?
I'm sorry.
Name, your name, please?
Oh, it's Fanny Ortiz.
Thank you.
And I am from Boyle Heights and I work as an IHS provider with SEIU Local 2015. And I am here as a proud supporter of the legalization of street vendors. Street vendors are entrepreneurs who need uplifting by decrementalizing to legalize street vending. As a single mother who only earns eleven eighteen an hour and works for only one hundred and nineteen hours per month, I can afford, I can only afford to eat out with street vendors, allowing me the opportunity to support the local hustle of the local street vendors, who most of the time are my neighbors and friends. I would like for a citywide permit program that is equitable, inclusive, and puts public safety and health first. The immediate action to complete the decriminalization of sidewalk vending by removing criminal penalties will protect immigrant entrepreneurs who are unjustly targeted under the Trump administration. We want a just and dignified vending system that allow our local entrepreneurs to provide for their families and no longer live with fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Carrie Morrison with the Hollywood Business Improvement District. I just would like to suggest that the longer we go without adopting an ordinance, the more confusion and chaos we see on the streets. And I think you even hear it today from the people who are in good faith trying to know what the rules are that they would want to follow them. What we have right now on Hollywood Boulevard in the tourist zone is increasing chaos and a public safety nightmare. We have wall-to-wall vendors selling everything from fidget spinners to paintings to necklaces. Very few food vendors, actually. People lined up right next to the crosswalks, lined up right next to bus stops, along bus stops. The ACE citations are not working. LAPD says that only forty-two percent of all ACE citations have gone to be paid in the last year. And if this is not going to be solved in the next six months, we're going to have to ask for an interim control ordinance to bring order back to Hollywood Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Paola Flores. I work for the Historic Core Business Improvement District. Thank you for hearing us today. In our continued commitment to helping vendors and businesses alike, all who are trying to make a living, we ask that there are policies set forth that protect both businesses and vendors and ensure both are functioning with respect and fairness to others. Vendors must be properly permitted, comply with all Health Department regulations, and commit to maintaining district cleanliness without burdening it in existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I'm Blair Bestin. I'm the Executive Director of the Historic Core Business Improvement District, and I want to thank you for your careful consideration of this ordinance and echo a lot of the comments and questions that many of you raised today, especially regarding enforcement, mainly how can we reward vendors and neighborhoods for proper permits, carts, and compliance in an effective way? How can property owners and businesses ultimately opt in or out, essentially weigh in, as they would need to anyway, to ensure proper public health requirements are met and trash removal? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking for Zander. My name is Deborah Hyman. I'm a street vendor and a vendor at Limerick Park. I have been a vendor at the park for several years now, and I've seen many changes at the park. But one thing that we have fought for in Limerick Park is unique cultural experience that Limerick Park community is known for. Limerick Park has remained a center for African identity and cultural practices in Los Angeles for many, many years now. Whether it's the African drum circle or the goods that vendors sell, Angelenos come to experience an African marketplace. But all that culture is endangered. If council members decide to support the exclusion and opt out certain areas of the city, they are without a doubt supporting the redlining of vending districts. I am, I asked the council, do you support the segregation of our city by drawing lines on the map? Or do you have our, or do we have your commitment to support the citywide program that uplifts all individuals that are trying to earn a living by vending? Your answer will come in the form of your actions. Limerick Park is a special district with historical significance. Do not destroy our communities by allowing opt-out.
Good afternoon. My name is Armando Flores, Legislative Affairs Manager with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We commend the efforts to address sidewalk vending and the hard work that has been invested in developing a comprehensive policy issue, or proposal, sorry. But we do have a few concerns on the impact this will have on businesses who have competed with sidewalk vendors for years. We want to ensure that businesses are able to operate with as little disruption or impact as possible. The policy should be clear that under no circumstance should the consent of an adjacent property owner or business be overruled. We would like to support vendors to comply and participate in the program. This is why the enforcement must be distinct for vendors operating with a permit and those operating without a permit. We would also like to see language that clearly states that vendors are not permitted to sell counterfeit goods. Sufficient funding to run this program should be a priority. It is important that city allocate additional staff to oversee the regulation and enforcement of sidewalk vending so vendors who follow the rules are not competing with those who aren't. We hope that you will consider these recommendations as you continue to develop this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Walsh, and I'm here today on behalf of the Motion Picture Association of America and our member companies. Firstly, we would like to thank the council and the CLA for specifying that permits for filming will supersede any permits for vending. However, we have concerns about how these conflicts will be dealt with when they arise. Will LAPD or Street Services need to intercede? How quickly will the city be able to respond in the event that a vendor needs to be asked to relocate? Secondly, as you are all aware, the sale of pirated films and television products as well as counterfeit studio merchandise continues to occur throughout Los Angeles. As Chairman Blumenfeld mentioned, the report before you today does not address this issue at all. We ask the committees to amend the policy to specifically prohibit the vending of counterfeit merchandise and provide for the revocation of any permit under which such product is being sold. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Corey Dacey. I represent the Ripley's Believe It or Not at the southeast corner of Hollywood and Highland. It's a very busy intersection. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. If it pleases the council, I have some images that I'd like to share with y'all. There's enough packets to get around, even though there's only like five or six of you left. It's good times. So really, we're not necessarily for or against at this point, but we definitely have some concerns about the implementation of it. Enforcement has to be number one priority. We've developed a great program, and y'all have spent a lot of time on the program, and it's a good program and it's going to work well, but I beg of the council to prioritize enforcement, and the enforcement being eighteen months from now really doesn't facilitate anything. You'll notice in the images when they get to you here, some of the safety hazards that we face daily, as well as the damage to the beautiful Walk of Fame, as well as the damage to our industry's impression when people come to an area like this and they are going to be forced upon by large groups of people as they just try to make their way through the beautiful intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Sale. I'm here representing the Fashion District Business Improvement District. We would like to ask the council to please include property owner consent as a requirement. This will promote synergy in commercial districts and will help to coordinate the Health Department's requirement of access to a bathroom for food vendors. Please include a clear and simple opt-out option. The one we have right now is not very clear. Who would do the opting out? Communities bid? Who? We would recommend enhanced enforcement must be used in the very beginning, otherwise no one will take this project seriously. There should be language that explicitly states counterfeit goods are prohibited from being sold. Placement requirements should prohibit high pedestrian areas such as the alley in the Fashion District, metro stations, LA Live, and/or tourist walking areas. We want to encourage families and others to walk, and blocking sidewalks prohibits this. After the initial vending district maps are approved, any future changes need to be streamlined and done through administrative, not full council approval. May I read one more?
One more.
Enforcement for those operating without a permit should be distinct from those operating with a permit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Andrew Kratz on behalf of the Building Owners and Managers Association of Greater L.A., representing three hundred commercial office buildings and two hundred million square feet of space in Los Angeles. BOMA supports the city's efforts to balance the rights of sidewalk vendors with brick-and-mortar commercial businesses. Specifically, we support the concepts of special vending and no vending districts with opt-out provisions based on petition and majority vote of the property owners. In addition, the city should ensure that sufficient staff is available to address the problems that come up during the early implementation phase. A difficult rollout may cause unnecessary confusion and possible conflict. Finally, we strongly urge the council to require a letter of consent from the adjacent property owner, not business owner. Retail business tenants are more transient and may have differing views of which sidewalk vendors are appropriate. Approval by one tenant should not bind the other. Property owners are long-term investors in the neighborhood and represent the interests of all retail tenants and thus should be the entity that provides consent. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Riato, and I'm the Executive Director of the South Park Business Improvement District. The South Park bid supports the decriminalization and regulation of street vending, and we thank the council for providing this preliminary framework. With regard to the proposal being considered today, we have several recommendations. The first and most glaring is concerned with enforcement. In order to support vendors participating in the sidewalk vending program, the enforcement model needs to distinguish between those operating with a permit and those operating without. Our second concern is with the placement of vending districts. Council should require property and/or business owner consent for issuing permits. Property and business owner support is critical in maintaining a friendly and respectful commercial district. It will also help vendors to meet the Health Department's requirement of access to bathrooms. Going forward, the vending district approval process should be streamlined. After the initial maps are approved by city council, future map changes should be handled at the administrative level. A program for legal and well-regulated street vending is long overdue, but without proper attention to enforcement, potential benefits are unlikely to materialize. Please consider these recommendations while moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Eggerd. I'm General Manager of the Hollywood Wax Museum and the Guinness World Record Museum on Hollywood Boulevard, right by Hollywood and Highland. I'd like to here today to express concern that the longer the city waits to pass an ordinance to regulate sidewalk vending, the greater the threat to public safety will be on the Boulevard. In the staff report prepared today, we appreciate your consideration for protecting certain types of sidewalks in the vending ordinance. I would like to reiterate that the Hollywood Walk of Fame should be protected. There are two reasons for this. First, it's a cultural landmark that people travel from all over the world to see. Right now, we have vendor tables blocking- Right now, we have vendor tables blocking the stars. It'd be like traveling to the Eiffel Tower and having banners draped all over it, or going to Roman Coliseum and having vendors at every corner impeding your passage and your ability to capture the place in photos. Second, the sidewalks are exceedingly crowded at night. We have two businesses on Hollywood Boulevard. In both cases, people are walking everywhere. Often, families are walking one lane or two lanes of traffic just to go around the vendors on the sidewalk. We ask the council to accelerate the passage of this law and protect the Hollywood Walk of Fame by exempting this historic sidewalk from the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jesse Leon with the Office of City Council Member Jose Wezar. We want to echo what's been said today and remind the committee that it's been over four years since Councilmember Price in our office first introduced a motion calling for a regulated citywide vending program. And it's been nearly one year since the entire city council voted to move forward with a proposed framework. We want to thank Chair Price and former Chair Buscaino for their work on pushing this forward through their respective committees. And we look forward to working with Chair Bloomingfield as we move forward. But we want to stress the importance that we move forward thoughtfully and swiftly for the countless of hard-working sidewalk vendors in our city who have been waiting patiently for several years, for far too long. Thank you very much.
My name is Oscar Levy Dominguez.
I'm sorry, sir, what was your name?
Yeah, I'm Oscar Levy Dominguez. I'm the founder of El Salvador Corridor Town. I'm also the founder of Latino Economic Empowering Roundtable. The reason I'm here is because I want to talk to you about how we start a business incubator with the vendors on the street, helping them how to start their own business. We have proof of different people becoming formal and doing business properly. I think it's essential to take this consideration to approve the vendors because out of the vendors, you have families, you have childrens. These childrens will be the next business people. These people deserve a chance. So I totally want to champion Councilmember Buscaino for legalizing and for putting this motion into place. I also want to tell Councilmember Price that you fight for injustice, especially in our District Nine. And you know the Latinos are moving forward to create a better place too. And Mr. Bloomingfield, you know that Takunulán is essential. May God bless. And Councilmember Martinez, you know most of these ladies are women. You should be, take care of the women. And I think being a Latina, you're, you gotta start thinking what you could do for our community. Thank you.
Okay, a few, a few more. Again, Carrie Morrison, Brian Darcy, Marty Shelton, Ellen Rito, Paula Flores, Andrew Cratzer, Rosiella Nakar, Rossley, Bustano Martinez, Evangelina Paredes, Natalia Garcia, Mona Leon, Gonzalo Solis, and it's like Zondre. No? I think they have all spoken. Okay, members. Okay, did anyone fill out a card who whose name I did not call? Okay, Mr. Herman, one minute.
You heard the people. Who represents us? We want our sidewalks so we can van, van, sell, sell, sell. We don't want to listen to Nuri. Last night in Van Nuys, we didn't have to tell her anything. Today, we have shit to talk about. Open up those sidewalks and let us sell, sell, sell. We don't want no permits. We don't ask for any unconstitutional permits. This is America, a place of opportunity. Joe Busciano, fuck the Italians. This is Mexico. This is America. We will make it great again with Trump. So fuck your permits, fuck this situation. You still don't have clarity of what you're talking about. So when I stand out there on the streets selling those paputas burgers that look like CD six, I just want you to know, the more you buy, the bigger you get, bitch.
Mr. Puppet.
Yes, it's very good. We have, we have a way to speaker card here, but let's talk about selling. Nuri Martinez knows about selling better than anybody in history. Yes. She lets them sell women. Yes, that's a commodity. She lets them sell drugs. Yes, that's a commodity. But when it comes to selling a DVD or a soda or a taco, you fucking people have to try to criminalize it. It's easier to sell bitches than to sell light switches. Yes, that's right. On Seventh and Alvarado, where the metro line goes off, me and my friend visited the market. It's called the market. It's working very well. Lots of nice people earning extra money and they send it back to their family and they pay taxes. So decriminalize it and stop fucking around. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our, our public comment and I want to thank everyone for, for weighing in pro and con based on the report from the CLA and amendments proposed by, by our members. I move that we adopt the CLA report recommendations with the following amendments. Amendment one, related to the program design to add a location by LAPD or LAFD to a list of criteria for opting out, limiting or prohibiting sidewalk vending in a prescribed location based on health, safety, and welfare issues. amend item two to state, instruct the city administrative officer with the assistance of the CLA, Workforce Development, and Bureau Street Services to report with a fee study and budget plan for implementation and enforcement of the proposed program to include full-cost recovery options with enforcement funding at the level described on page three and four. Attached, attachment two of the CLA report with uniforms and vehicles for street services investigators and factoring in additional gross receipts and tax revenue that will be generated by the program when setting fees for full recovery. Adopt item four, A through E. And add instruction four F to instruct EWDD to also provide council with a budget to utilize their current service providers, i.e. business source centers for comparison purposes. Amendment five to instruct, instruct EWDD, Bureau Street Services, and, and the CLA in conjunction with the ITA and Office of Finance to develop an online system for vendor registration, issuance of certificates of operation, and mobile site for enforcement, for enforcement officers that shows registered locations and permit holders. I would like to add that the program interface or application be available in multiple languages, including English and Spanish. Adopt items six A and six B. And add instruction six C to instruct the city attorney in conjunction with the CLA, CAO, EWDD, to establish a process which property owners can affirmatively opt or disallow street vending on sidewalk or fronting on their property. I have to state I don't agree with, with that, allowing anybody to just opt out, but we will, we will move forward. We'll get a report back. Adopt items seven, eight, and nine. And add instruction ten with the understanding that the mapping would need to be completely, fully understood. Let me start over. With the understanding that the mapping would need to be completed to fully understand our enforcement needs. I'd like to instruct that Bureau Street Services with the assistance of the CAO report with a staffing plan including equipment and uniforms necessary and related costs. Add instruction eleven. We made it clear to staff that the intent of this program is to assist low-income individuals. And I'd like to stress to EWDD that the department takes into account the most vulnerable populations, including seniors and the unemployed. Add section, instruction twelve. That the city attorney in conjunction with CLA report back on a process whereby vendors previously convicted under LA Municipal Code forty-two point zero zero can have convictions related to vending expunged from their record. Add instruction thirteen to instruct the CLA, the CLA and CAO with the assistance of the city attorney to examine license pricing and allocation and incentives vending in certain areas. But prices to be, to fully recover costs in high enforcement areas. So without objection, members, that will be the order. Mr. Clerk, is there anything else before us at this time?
Uh, nothing else, sir.
All right. Well, I want to thank everyone for being here, expressing your, your concerns and your support. This meeting is adjourned.